Good evening. This 10th meeting on the 73rd term of Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members on the council, due to us being meeting virtually, please note that I will recognize you by saying you have the floor. Once I recognize you, please state your name and then begin to speak. Tonight's invocation will be given by Imam Mohammed Basir Arafat. Imam Arafat is a longtime leader in Baltimore's Muslim community and serves as Director of Civilizations Exchange and Cooperation Foundation. Imam, we appreciate you joining us this evening. The floor is yours.
Mr. President, I know he is on his way. I just spoke to Imam on the phone. He should be on any second.
Thank you, Matt, for that. I know he's excited about talking to us tonight, so we're gonna take a couple moments to wait for him to be able to join us, okay? And normally, we have not done that in the past. We've kept going on going. We would like to acknowledge the deputy council member from the 9th District from joining on the screen. Is that the track star?
Yes, it is. Thank you, sir.
That's the track star. Look forward to watching one of his meets one day. Matt, is the Imam having some technical difficulties?
Yeah, he should be on any second. I just spoke to him again.
All right. The Vice President is eagerly waiting to continue her birthday weekend celebration, so that's why I ask.
Luckily for Madam Vice President, I think we have a relatively light agenda this evening.
Thank you for the birthday present. Matt, if you get a chance, get me those numbers.
Head in your way, Madam Vice President.
Greetings, Councilman Glover. I'm glad you're able to join us and healing wonderfully.
Yeah, good to have you back, man.
Mr. President, I do see Imam Arafat on the call now.
Greetings, Imam Arafat. The floor is yours. We've been eagerly awaiting you to come join us tonight. Thank you so much. We truly appreciate all that you mean to Baltimore, all that you do for Baltimore, and that's why your Baltimore City Council is here, ready for you, ready to listen. You're on mute, Mr. Imam.
I just wanted to say that I'm really honored and delighted to be with all of you today, and thank you very much for the honorable invitation. I would like to start by calling on the loving Lord. Almighty God, the Lord of compassion, wisdom, and might. We thank you for bringing us together today to give our best for the well-being of everyone in our beloved Baltimore city. We ask you, O Allah, the Lord of love and mercy, to enlighten all of us. We ask for your supernatural wisdom as we make some tough decisions in this city council meeting today. Almighty God, help us to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions for our beloved city of diversity and inclusion in Baltimore. Almighty God, help us to wisely evaluate our options, considering the pros and cons. Help us to be unified in making our best possible decisions and to effectively carry them out. O Allah, bless us all and guide us so we serve with love and compassion and follow on the footsteps of your beloved prophets, Abraham, Moses, Jesus, Muhammad, and all the saints. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mr. Imam. Now, we will turn to Pledge Allegiance. So if everyone, if you have a flag in your home or in your office, please turn, and now we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. Now, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the role of the members.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the April 19th, 2021 proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Well, without objection, we will adopt the journal. Hearing none, the journal is now adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found on Page 2 of the agenda tonight. We will now move to bills being introduced for first reading.
City Council Bill 21-0071, Street Encroachment, 1707 Eastern Avenue, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the construction and maintenance of a portion of a building projecting into the public right-of-way on the south side of Eastern Avenue on the property known as 1707 Eastern Avenue. Sponsors are President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-0072, Local 911 Telephone Fee Revision, for the purpose of revising the local 911 telephone fee and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors are President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee. On to 21-73.
City Council Bill 21-0073, Zoning Conditional Use Banquet Hall, 5600 York Road, also known as 5602A York Road, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a banquet hall on both floors of the property known as 5600 York Road, also known as 5602A York Road, Block 5014C, Block 001, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque. Sponsors are Councilmember Conway.
This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. On to 21-74.
City Council Bill 21-0074, Office of Emergency Management Independent Agency, for the purpose of repealing Article 1, Subtitle 18, Disaster Control and Civil Defense as obsolete, establishing an Office of Emergency Management as an independent agency, defining certain terms, providing for the appointment of an Executive Director of the Office, setting forth certain duties of the Executive Director, providing for a staff and budget for the Office, requiring the Office to include specific emergency support functions in the Emergency Operations Plan, requiring the Office to coordinate with certain city agencies in writing the Emergency Operations Plan, requiring the Office to update the City Emergency Operations Plan quadrilaterally and support the updated plan, memorandum regarding changes made to the plan to the mayor and the city council, requiring the Office to report annually to the mayor and the city council on certain activities and metrics, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors are Councilmember Conway.
Chairman Conway, would you like to speak on behalf of this bill?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you.
Yes, the floor is yours.
The Office of Emergency Management is a small agency, but it plays a significant role in coordinating our city's response to major emergencies and establishing plans and policies to respond to catastrophic incidents. Over the years, the reporting requirements of this agency has fluctuated between the mayor's office and the fire department, and the uncertainty of this fractured reporting system has resulted in significant tasks often being overlooked. One of those significant tasks has not occurred since 2013, and that's the process of updating the Emergency Operations Plan, which this legislation would require the agency to do every four years. A barrier to that, a barrier that currently exists in mandating this process to occur in a timely fashion is that the city council cannot legislate policy for mayoral offices. So in establishing this office as an independent agency, the council would gain that legislative ability. This bill would also bring us in alignment with other local jurisdictions in Maryland and across the country who've made their emergency management offices standalone agencies. So as we work to ensure that we have the appropriate plans and resources in place to support our residents and guests during significant emergencies, we must embrace the fact that the Office of Emergency Management is our lifeline to preparedness, mitigation, and recovery phases of every emergency that we face. I'd appreciate the support of my colleagues and look forward to thoughtful dialogue on this topic. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, are there any additional co-sponsors for this piece of legislation? I see Councilmember Torrance. I see Councilwoman Rachel Porter. So this has been assigned to Public Safety Government Operations Committee. On to 21-75.
City Council Bill 21-0075, Study and Report Sewage Backup Expedited Reimbursement and Direct Assistance Program, for the purpose of requiring that the Baltimore City Department of Public Works submit a report to the mayor and city council studying the feasibility of implementing an expedited reimbursement and direct assistance program for any sewage backup, not limited to wet weather, capacity-related causes, requiring certain agency assistance and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors are Councilmembers Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, Ramos, and Bullock.
Councilmember Burnett, would you like to have a floor on this bill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. So this is a pretty straightforward study bill. I was thankful and excited to hear about the announcement of the DBW's Sewage On-Site Program, the acronym SOS, that... Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, okay. So in our hearing on this a few months, about a month ago, we learned that the agency will be providing onsite sewage cleanup for households that have experienced wastewater backups, which is a great thing for families, especially those that may be income-challenged, they can't afford to clean up. But the limitation of the program was that it was for wet weather events only, and through our work in having numerous hearings and conversations on wastewater issues, we know that there are a lot of people who also experience issues during dry weather events that are caused by blockages or other issues with the city's infrastructure, and they may need assistance as well. And so this is informing the agency to look into the cost benefit of providing coverage for all backups so that regardless of the cause, that people are still getting that assistance. And so just wanted to do a deeper dive into the issue, and that's what the bill does. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. This bill has been assigned to the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. On to 21-76.
City Council Bill 21-0076, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 1049 Brantley Avenue, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 Zoning District of the property known as 1049 Brantley Avenue, Block 0115, Lot 69, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, and granting a variance from certain bulk regulations, block area size. Sponsors are Councilmember Bullock.
This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. On to 21-77.
City Council Bill 21-0077, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Five Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 1110 West Lafayette Avenue, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to five dwelling units in the R8 Zoning District on the property known as 1110 West Lafayette Avenue, Block 79, Lot 4A, as shown on the accompanying plaque and the lot number circled. Sponsors are Councilmember Bullock.
This resolution has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. On to 21-78.
City Council Bill 21-0078, Required Real Estate Disclosures, Formally Vacant Structures, for the purpose of requiring certain disclosures in order to sell a property that was formally issued a vacant building notice and providing for certain penalties. Sponsors are Councilmember Ramos, Conway, and Cohen.
Councilwoman Ramos, would you like to have the floor for 21-78?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you very much.
I yield the floor to you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This bill tries to close a major loophole in a real problem that some of our new homeowners face, and we discovered it through helping people address some of their tax sale issues. So what happens currently is sometimes a developer who's developed a vacant property does not file for a use and occupancy permit, which means that the vacant building notice is still on the property and therefore gets transferred to the new owner, who then has to try to work with the contractors and sometimes didn't really get, you know, didn't really see that there was something that they could do and often end up in tax sale because of the citations. So what this bill does is it says that before you can sell a home that you've rehabbed, you have to disclose that you filed the use and occupancy permit to get rid of that vacant building notice. And then that will allow for a new homeowner to decide what to do about the home if the use and occupancy is not there. So this closes a major loophole, and I'm excited to introduce this legislation, and I will be introducing several others in the next few months that address some of these issues that we've discovered during helping our homeowners in tax sale, and I look forward to the discussion in committee, and thanks so much, everyone, for your support.
No, thank you, Councilmember Ramos. This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. On to 21-79.
Mr. President, could you add me on, please?
I'm so sorry. Please add Madam Vice President on to this bill. Are there any additional co-sponsors? I'm scrolling through my grid. I see Councilmember Torrance. So please add Madam Vice President, as well as Councilmember Torrance, to this bill. On to 21-79, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-0079, Repeal of Ordinance 9425, Fort Covington Planned Unit Development, for the purpose of repealing Ordinance 9425, as amended by Ordinance 57, Ordinance 2-431, and Ordinance 4-884, and Ordinance 16-572, which designated certain properties as an industrial planned unit development known as Port Covington, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors are Councilmember Costello.
Councilmember Costello, can you inform the general public what this bill's doing? I'm sorry, Chairman Costello, can you inform the general public what this bill is doing?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is rather ministerial in nature. This is the repeal of a PUD or a Planned Urban Development Plan, which was established in 1989 or 1990 for the Port Covington area. That was obviously pre-acquisition of the land and a development plan for that area. So this basically permits the development to move forward. This is not related in any way, shape, or form to the TIF or to the Under Armour campus. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Costello. This resolution has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Now on to resolutions, resolutions that will be introduced tonight. The clerk will read the resolutions. On to 21-44R, Madam Clerk.
Resolution 21-0044R, Informational Hearing COVID-19 and Mental Health, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, and members from the Baltimore City Healthcare Community to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss the financial, physical, and social impacts that COVID-19 has had on the mental health of Baltimore city residents and what resources are available to help people cope and recover from this trauma. Sponsors are Councilmember McCray, Cohen, Ramos, and Bullock.
Madam Chair from the 2nd District, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. As you all know, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we also know that COVID-19 has had devastating impacts on the mental health and wellness of our Baltimore city residents. As city leaders, we must take every action to ensure our residents know that they are not alone, that we are in this battle together, and with this resolution, the HAC Committee will discuss the state of mental health during the COVID-19 pandemic, what resources are currently available, and what response measures we can implement to tackle this issue. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology. Are there any additional co-sponsors? I see Madam Vice President with her finger raised, and I see the Councilmember in the 13th District, Councilmember Glover with his hand raised, Councilmember Burnett, Councilmember Torrance, Chairman Stokes. I believe I have them all. Thank you. Now, again, this resolution has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. On to 21-45R.
Resolution 21-0045R, Keeping the Promise, Urging President Biden to Provide a Pathway to Citizenship for Immigrant and Essential Workers, for the purpose of urging President Joseph R. Biden and the United States Congress to enact legislation to provide a pathway to citizenship for immigrant essential workers, children who qualify for the Declarate Action for Childhood Arrivals, DACA, and residents who are under the Temporary Protective Status Program and their spouses and children as part of the Federal Economic Recovery Program. Sponsors are Councilmembers Ramos and Cohen.
At this point, I would like to recognize the gentle lady from the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This resolution comes to us from many advocates who have been fighting for immigrant rights for a long time, and also a recognition that many of our immigrant essential workers were not able to take advantage of or qualify for the aid that was given to so many of us to deal with the pandemic. And so this resolution is asking for President Biden and the Congress to put us to a, put our immigrant essential workers, our DACA and our TPS workers in a path to citizenship because they have been working, they have been paying taxes, they are part of us, and we welcome them to Baltimore, and we welcome them to the U.S. and should be a part of our nation as a citizen. So I look forward to the support on this resolution, and I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection for the rules to be suspended? The rules are now suspended. Madam Councilwoman.
And I'd like to move for immediate adoption.
Clerk will call the roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. President Mosby?
Aye.
Councilmembers Cohen?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Horne?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Costello? Stokes?
Aye.
Glover? And Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. You can now, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second by Councilman Stokes.
The motion has been approved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries, and the calendar is now approved. We will now move on to bills on second reader. I would like to recognize at this time Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without any objection, we will remain reading short titles for the remainder of the meeting, not hearing or seeing any objections. We are on to short titles. The first committee will be Health, Environment, and Technology. Madam Clerk, please go on to 21-49.
City Council Bill 21-0049, Prohibited Disposals, Fines, and Reporting, The Neighbors Against Predatory Dumping Act.
At this point, I would like to recognize the Chair of the Committee, Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee held a hearing on the bill on April 21st. A committee amendment was distributed to my colleagues before this meeting, and I move the amendment.
Amendment approved. Okay, so I've heard it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting the committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Madam Chairwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
This bill has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill's been approved on second reading and will now be printed and moved on to third reading. Madam Clerk, please go on to 21-32R.
City Council Bill 21-0032R, Informational Hearing, Studying the Feasibility of a Small Holler Incentive Program.
At this point, I would like to yield the floor to the Chairwoman from the 2nd District.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee held a hearing on the resolution on April 21st. I move the resolution favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of moving this resolution forward, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this resolution is adopted. On to Public Safety and Government Operations, the first bill is 21-21R. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-0021R, Informational Hearing, Building a Homegrown Public Safety Cadet Program.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations heard this bill on April 21st, 2021. It was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. The committee approved this bill as favorable, and I move the bill as favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
I've heard a motion, and it's been properly... I've heard a a a motion and it's been properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted on to twenty one dash thirty three R.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero thirty three R investigative hearing women in public safety leveling the playing field.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this bill came out of committee on April twenty first, twenty twenty one. It was sponsored by Councilmember Danielle McCray. The committee approved this bill as favorable and I move this bill as favorable.
It's been a motion that's properly placed on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. This resolution is now adopted. Uh, Ways and Means on to Chairman Costello. Madam Clerk, please read in twenty one dash forty two.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero forty two real estate records modernization.
I yield the floor to the Chairman from the eleventh district.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Ways and Means Committee held a hearing uh on this bill. Uh, real estate records and modernization uh last Tuesday. Uh, there's an amendment on my colleague's desk. Uh, this amendment uh is essentially the consensus um. Of uh the Mayor's Office, the Council President's Office, the Comptroller's Office, DHCD. Uh, and law uh is basically a, I would characterize it as a technical change. Uh, in terms of wording, uh but in short, the Law Department was uh supportive and the committee. Uh, uh, as a whole, all seven members were in agreement with this approach that we would allow the agency's time. Uh, to put together an amendment that reflected uh their consensus thoughts on that. They have done that. Uh, this amendment is now on my colleague's desk. At this time, I move the amendment.
A little more, a little more substantive than technical, but we're gonna allow that to go. Chairman Costello. Is there a second for Chairman Costello's uh?
Second.
Chair amendment. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting the chair's amendment, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is adopted. Back to you Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, there were also amendments uh from the hearing uh that the committee did adopt. Uh. I'm not sure, do we need to uh adopt those or may I move the bill as amended?
No, I I would rather, I'm not sure about that, but I was thinking about that as well. I would rather let's um. Adopt the amendments and then we'll move the bill again. Just to be.
Thank you, Mr. President. There, there are amendments uh that were approved during the hearing by the committee. At this time, I move those amendments.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the amendments from committee, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are adopted. Back to you Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of moving the, of of moving this bill forward, um, uh as amended, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. Uh, this bill is printed, uh move, will be printed for third reader and moves forward. At this point, we'll go to City Council Bill twenty one dash sixty two.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero sixty two high performance newly constructed dwellings clarification.
At this point, I would like to uh yield the floor to the Chair of Ways and Means. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of uh moving this bill forward, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
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 Please note that there is a nay from um Councilmember. Ryan Dorsey. Uh, there's a nay from Councilwoman Odette Ramos. There's a nay from Councilman uh Zeke Cohen. I believe there's three nays. Alright. Uh, this bill will be printed for third reader. It is approved. On to Council Bill twenty one dash twenty six R. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero twenty six R investigative hearing COVID nineteen and small business reopening.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution favorably.
It's been moved favorably. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved favorably and um and provided uh second. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. This resolution is now adopted. We will turn the bills over to third reading for final passage. The clerk, please read the bills. Uh, and call roll on to twenty one dash twenty six.
Twenty one dash zero zero twenty six rezoning twelve oh one South Caton Avenue. President Mosby.
Aye. We don't, we don't have to say.
Okay, Councilmembers Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer. Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover and Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill is approved. On to twenty one dash twenty seven.
Twenty one dash zero zero twenty seven RPP area nine Federal Hill, exception for one East Montgomery Street. President Mosby, Councilmembers Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton. Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover and Ramos.
This bill is approved. Uh, thank you for the work on the desk. Now on to committee announcements. Uh, Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcement. First up is Madam Vice President. Sharon Green Middleton in Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a a list here for some added uh committee hearings. Um, on six fifteen twenty one at two P M. City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero two nine R. Approval for the exchange of a class BD seven license to a class A seven license eighteen oh one East North Avenue. And the sponsor is Councilman Stokes. Also on six fifteen twenty one at two oh five P M. We'll hear City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero three O R. Approval for the exchange of a class BD seven license to a class A seven license twelve. Thirty two North Caroline Street and the sponsor is Councilman Stokes. Also on six fifteen twenty one to ten P M. We'll hear City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero three one R. Approval for the exchange of a class BD seven license to a class A seven license. At ten forty one Greenmont Avenue. And the sponsor is Councilman Stokes. Also on six fifteen twenty one at two fifteen P M. We'll hear City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero five seven repeal Rice's Town Plaza Transit Station Urban Renewal Area and Plan. Sponsor is Councilman Schleifer. And also on six fifteen twenty one at two twenty P M. We'll hear City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero five three rezoning forty two oh seven to forty two oh nine. Menlo Drive. Sponsor of the bill is also Councilman Schleifer. And then on six twenty two twenty one at two P M. We'll hear City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero five four rezoning six oh five South Caton Avenue. Uh, sponsor of the bill is Councilwoman Porter. Also on six twenty two twenty one at two ten P M. We'll hear City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero five one. Rezoning forty nine hundred Boston Street. Sponsor of the bill is Councilman Cohen. Also on six twenty two twenty one at two fifteen P M. We'll hear City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero five two. Rezoning block six four five eight lot zero zero four and block P S C O lot zero eight five. Sponsor of the bill, Councilman Cohen. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up Chairman Stokes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, May the sixth. Twenty twenty one beginning at ten thirty A M. For Council Resolution twenty one dash zero zero eleven R. Informal hearing, financial literacy curriculum content within the Baltimore City. School system at the request of Vice President Milton. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Stokes. Next up, we will hear from Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objections, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, May the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one at five P M. On resolution two one dash zero zero four four R informational hearing COVID nineteen and mental health. This hearing will be televised on Charm TV and conducted virtually through Webex. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, we will go to uh Chairman uh Conway, Public Safety and Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty one. To hear Bill twenty one dash zero zero five nine study and report succession planning. The bill was sponsored by Councilman Robert Stokes. Um, uh, the committee will also be meeting on Wednesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty one to hear, oh, excuse me. For that last bill, um, it will start at one oh five P M. It's gonna be virtual. The committee will also be meeting on um Wednesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty one to hear Bill. Um, twenty one dash zero zero six seven Baltimore City residency requirements prohibit uh prohibition against purposeful evasion. At one ten P M. On um, uh, virtually. Excuse me, gotta go back and do that again. Uh, permission to suspend rule ten dash two and ten dash three to announce a hearing.
Hearing no objections, the rules will be suspended.
I'll repeat that.
Rules are suspended. Please uh continue, Mr. Chair.
I'll repeat that last one. Uh, we're we're gonna be meeting Wednesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty one at one ten P M. Virtually. To hear Bill twenty one dash zero zero six seven Baltimore City residency requirements uh perhi- prohibition against purposeful evasion. Uh, sponsored by Councilwoman Danielle, Danielle McCray. And uh, last but not least, uh, we will be meeting on Wednesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty one at one fifteen P M. Uh, to hear Bill twenty one dash zero zero six zero study and report fire department promotional pro- uh process. Sponsored by Councilman Chris Burnett, Burnett. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is Chairman Schleifer with rules and legislative oversight. I yield the floor to you, Mr. Schleifer.
Uh, I have no announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Schleifer. And then last but certainly not least, uh Chairman uh Costello with Ways and Means.
Mr. President, no formal announcements today. Um, these will all be announced at the next hearing, but just wanted to get this on everyone's radar. Uh, Baltimore City Council Tax Payers Night is gonna be on uh May twenty seventh at five P M. Uh, and we will start uh budget hearings at nine A M. In the morning on uh June first and those will go through June seventh. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Cost- uh Chairman Costello. Uh, before we go on to new business, I believe the gentleman from the first district. Uh, would like to change his vote. Um, I yield the floor to you, um, Councilman Cohen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, um, apologies, got distracted. My child in the background.
It's always, it's always the deputy council member that's distracting us. I get it.
Indeed. Um, wanted to put in a yes on the high performance newly constructed dwellings, uh, Councilman Costello's bill.
Yeah, uh, um, could you say, could you read the um, the bill number for us, just to get it on the record?
Twenty one dash zero zero six two.
Got you. So twenty one dash zero zero six two, please ensure that uh Councilmember Cohen uh is in support. On that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Uh, now we're gonna move on to regular uh announcements. Uh, if there are any regular announcements. About all the amazing work that's going on in your districts or that you guys are doing, please let us know. Uh, firsthand I saw raised was uh Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you colleagues. Um, I'm excited to uh make sure that everybody knows that we have. Two vaccine clinics in the district on Thursday, May sixth. Uh, one is at the Waverly Y in partnership with MedStar and the other is at the Rita Church Recreation Center. In partnership with the Health Department and J H U. They are both Moderna. So you'll come on the sixth and then come back um four weeks later. But uh, I hope to see so many uh neighbors that still haven't been vaccinated. This is a great time to do that. I have a second announcement, if that's okay?
And that's open for all uh members and citizens in Baltimore.
Correct.
Councilwoman Ramos is saying, don't meet her there, but beat her there if you have not taken your vaccination shot. I yield the floor back to you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just want to express my amazing thank you, grateful to all of you for uh. Your advocacy and help on this issue of tax sale uh for this year's tax sale. Uh, today, the mayor announced that he's taking uh lots of people off of the tax sale rolls and being strategic about the next steps. Um, I am just uh thrilled about this announcement. We worked really, really hard. The last few weeks to try to get more members of my uh constituents and others um out of tax sale. And uh, did not get to everyone. And so I'm just glad that we're able to do that now. And also the announcement today was to uh move forward on major reforms of the system. Both on the administrative side and on the fact that the tax sale is so predatory that we need to change it. To work with homeowners to pay their taxes um and not go through this terrible system that we have now. So. Um, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for your support and for uh colleagues. Also to uh Chairwoman McCray for her leadership on the bill um last year that is taking some uh members out of uh homeowners out of um tax sale for um next year. And uh, we'll continue the work uh around this issue. And again, thank you very much.
You know, we will not always get a consensus of all council members on every single item. Uh, but this was an issue where we collectively used our voices to really push forward. Again, thank you to all the work of Chairwoman McCray in the past. Uh, thank you for all your work um and persistence on this particular issue. Uh, Council uh Woman Ramos. Uh, you know, we had ability of standing with the mayor today to announce. Uh, that uh the folks uh will be pulled away uh from uh this tax sale for this particular year. Um, how this is a temporary kind of step uh to a very draconian type of process. Uh, we know that the administration is committed to developing a sustainable as well as a long-term solution. Um, we understand and know that this impacts our most vulnerable residents uh and disproportionately impacts communities of color. Uh, in uh areas that have been hit uh hard by things far beyond what COVID has done over the past year. So. Again, thank you for the leadership uh in the collective uh nature of this body for pushing forward. At this point, are there any additional regular announcements? I think I see the hand of Chairman Stokes.
Two announcements. Uh, a good friend of mine, Phil Allen.
You only get one.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, Mr. President. Um, a good friend of mine, Phil Allen, who just been married for two years. I wanna give a condolences to his wife. Ton Dria Simon Allen, who just passed away, I think, yesterday. And he's a great guy. He been working in the banking industry and he's, his wife just passed away suddenly. Also, look for announcement.
I'm sorry, Chairman. Uh, say his name again, so we make sure we get it right.
Ton Dria, Ton Dria is his wife, Simon Allen. T O N D R I A. Simon Allen, A L L E N.
Got it.
And my second announcement to look for, I have a company that's will be donating five hundred hotspots. To the twelfth district and the actual internet business, the internet service will be free for a whole year. So I look forward to my colleagues being part of the press conference and I'm really excited about what's happening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do you have any additional information for us, like when the press conference will be, where it will be, or you're still?
I don't, I don't, we're working on that now, but I'll make sure all my colleagues, also you, Mr. President, would be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're lighting up the black butterfly in the twelfth district. We love it.
So I'm at best.
Are there any additional announcements?
Yes, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, who's that? Oh, uh, the gentle lady from District Ten, Councilwoman Felicia Porter. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to send my condolences to the individuals and, and families and the community of Pig Town for the shooting last night in Carroll Park. We've been working tirelessly to get answers and, and really a way moving forward on with the administration. So I just wanted to send my condolences to those families, the neighbors, and the people that attended yesterday. It's a very traumatic experience. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, definitely. Thank you for elevating that, Councilwoman Porter. Back to you, Chairman Stokes. I see your hand raised.
I have, uh, just one more announcement. I don't know if you know about the Miracle Street Garden on North Avenue in Collington. We just got Amazon donated ten thousand dollars to Mr. Sharp. He has a brand new John Deere riding mower. He got new benches. He got a weed whacker. So now, Social Security Administration is donating a two and a half ton playground to that particular space for the kids, because if you've got an urban garden, if we have our young kids in the same space, they can learn how to do urban garden. So I will be doing a press release for that, and I'm excited about that. And that would be, I'm a star also. As soon as we get a date when we can go pick it up from Social Security Administration, I will make sure that all my colleagues, if they want to come to Social Security and be a part of the press conference, I think is real exciting that that's happening right there at the urban garden. So thank you, Mr. President.
Well, we look forward to coming out and rooting you on, so please make sure you provide us with that information. At this point, are there any additional regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none. Madam Vice President, if you could please lift up in our prayers during our thirty-second moment of silence, Ms. Tendia Simon Allen. I believe that is the only name that we have for tonight. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at five P M. And may we have a moment of silence for, Mr. President, could you say her name again? T, I didn't.
Tendia Simon Allen.
Tendia Simon Allen. And also, we do have a few more. On behalf of Councilman Schleifer from the fifth district, a moment of silence for Ephraim Gordon. And also, on behalf of Baltimore City D W employees, Davon Mason, that was recently killed in that incident on York Road. And also, the families of the victims of what happened in Pig Town, Carroll Park. And basically, you know, right now, all of the, we pray for all of the families of the victims of violence in this city. We now have reached a hundred and five incidents or deaths. And we also have reached nine hundred and thirty-four deaths from COVID-nineteen thus far. And then we also have our continued opioid epidemic. And just a moment of silence for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further business at the desk, this will conclude the tenth meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.